Please, in order to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Submit by the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Report of any executive sentences?
Never done.
I'm gonna do the proclamation first for the Constitution week. Terry, if you wanna. Down there. So, the proclamation is for, whereas September seventeen twenty twenty five marks the two hundred and thirty eighth anniversary of the draft drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas this fitting proper record official recitation to this magnificent document and memorable anniversary and patriotic celebrations which will come without.
Oh, my.
Calling the occasion, I'm brain free today. Whereas public law nineteen fifteen guarantees the issuing of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States of the week designated September seventeenth through the twenty third, twenty twenty five is Constitution week. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Board's Hoop County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty third, twenty twenty five as Constitution week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty seven by individually protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guarding of our liberties, remembering the lost rights may never be regained. Of the Constitution is a document that is based by our founding fathers and the principles of Abraham Lincoln said that this document must be maintained and protected because it is one of the only safeguards the people have in our country. So, it's a very important document. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate you. Hello. Terry, move.
Pretty much said it all, I mean, we take this for granted and we're the only country in the whole world that has this experiment that's gone on for over two hundred years and we cherish it and wanna protect it and we can't ever forget it, so.
And freedom does come at a price. Again, over the years, a lot of people battled because of that piece of paper and the freedom that definitely we endure year after year and now almost two hundred and fifty years later. It's still as strong as it was written from the day, the first day we bring, so.
Thank you.
From Robert Rosen.
Well, this is from the Daughters of American Revolution, which was started in Pottsville by Sarah Pilgrim. She buried in the Baker Cemetery, started in nineteen oh seven. And we are working with different communities each year to do different things. We did have a marker re-dedicated a couple of years ago. And next year for the country's two hundred and fiftieth birthday, we are working with Tamakiwa and their Liberty Tree Park. And we are putting up a plaque that's the Daughters of American Revolution to honor the veterans and the patria that are around the surrounding area, so.
You wanna talk about the Liberty Letter?
Yeah, we were there for the planting of the Liberty Tree in Tamakiwa this past Sunday. And it is a sapling of one of the original thirteen Liberty Trees. It was the last remaining Liberty Tree left out of the original thirteen colonies. The one in Tamakiwa is a sapling. And each county has applied for it. And it's, it's really neat that one of the original Liberty Trees is in my hometown Tamakiwa and it's in Hoopla County, which I think is a great thing. And what the Liberty Tree means to our representative republic is phenomenal. So, our founding fathers were wise men that saw way into the future, but they planted those seeds with. It's in Door Town, it's two hundred and fifty years next year, so.
So, neat project, it's a cooperation of, uh, the coordination between the county, which provided demolition money for a couple of pretty rough little homes across the train station. Uh, Tamakiwa partners and the, uh, for Tamakiwa, all of the bits of health and finish and finish came in very good into the low price deposit.
And the Grand Lodge Pennsylvania. And the Sonic Lodge of Old Town Tamakiwa Lodge. And also a Tiki Bar Representative Bar. And get some of the funds so the county could.
If you're going down to Tamakiwa, running across the train station, you'll see what used to be three, the last day the homes are gone, it's a nice park there, saw it on this Liberty Tree, it's grown in the center, so take a look or stop and walk in.
And the Tamakiwa D A R and they decided to be a part of that by having the plaque. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Senator.
Welcome, any Republican comment?
Morning, George. Good morning. George, I'm always calling out. I just wanted to say something. Uh, it's your, I know you probably can't do this, it's probably you. Streets, it's, if you can mention to somebody, a ninety-five year old man at the store center fell on one of the, uh, sewer covers. It's actually sunk it in right by the center on Arch Street and sunk it in. And he, he was backing up, didn't realize it was like that and back hot and he went forwards. He almost got his, for a ninety-five year old guy, he almost got his balance, but he ended up hitting his head. And thank God he didn't get a concussion or anything, I had no broken bones. Side was still, it's a little sore, but other than that, I mean, they gotta be careful with these play things, you know? There are older people that are walking the streets and, and I mean, it was accidental that he did it, but.
It's on Arch Street.
It's on the arch, yeah. It's, uh, right there by the center.
Center.
Yes. So, you see, it's a, a cover, not, but it's sunk in. And the road is actually curved in, alright? If you can mention it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say, uh, for the senior citizens and veterans, once again, I'm here just to remind them that don't give up hope. I hope and pray that the ones that are really hurting went to these assessment things, minds today. And I hope it for the best, but I just, I just hope that the ones that really need the help, they're getting the help. And, uh, I, I'm encouraged by what some people have been hearing, that it's going good. And it seems like most of them are encouraged. So, maybe just by showing up, you know, showing your, what you have, papers and everything like you have, maybe that helped out. And these gentlemen or ladies are gonna say, okay, you know, we're gonna bring it down or something like that. You gotta speak up, that's what I mean. If you don't speak up, it's not gonna be done. And it's just some things that I, I hope and pray that don't give up hope, just keep plugging away. And if you missed it this year, please try it next year. That's all I have to say, man.
Thanks, George.
Yeah.
Yeah, the appeals are going really well, you know, our boards are doing a really good job. There's still about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty a day, I think he's gonna go.
Yep, that would be very important.
But, about, yeah, but I mean, it's a lot, they're, you know, and.
Some days there's less, some days.
There's a little more, but the people, I've been hearing positive feedback almost from everybody that's going through the appeals process. It's one more thing to take advantage of during this reassessment. It's why we hammered it home so hard to make sure you go to the appeals, you know, follow through the process, because.
Even if you just speak up.
Yeah, that's, let me just do the process, because there, these boards are, they're correcting the anomalies, the stuff that doesn't fit the norm. That's my opinion of it, and I've seen as much as I did being down there, you're correcting the norms, the stuff that doesn't fall into, fit in, like, you know, square pay.
I heard they have like a screen that shows you're all on all different sides. So, right now, just speaking.
And, and you know, it's people, and it's giving people a second chance. I know that some of the measurements are off on people's stuff, the square footage, so it's another chance to correct that data. So, you know, I'm proud of everybody down there, our, our office here, the assessment office and the boards are doing a great job now.
Also, the first batch of determination letters.
What, eleven?
When I mailed, that was three hundred, three thousand one hundred and fifty-seven. And I was doing the audit and I didn't see no problems, that I had to go back to a board and say, hey, it's likely why you.
Did this. And it are gonna be, as far as I know, they are going to be viewable, the updates on the website.
I believe you're right, because Tim told me that Sunday evening, the ones that went out in the mail, they should.
Will update this Sunday, so then on Monday, the people that are getting the rebound and someone. Notices, determinations, their changes should be live then. Well, that's, yes, I know there was some confusion about that, so I asked about it a little bit, so, but as of right now, that's what I think.
That's why I understand you.
Yeah, so people will be able to see the change in the values. Okay.
Wait for your three minutes to be open.
I, I want to speak earlier.
Sorry. So, he dated, he started stopwatch for you, but he started for me. Alright, real quick, the North Hall, Ms. Stevens and Ms. Gaffney, neither one know updates. Five elected officials not here at nine thirty this morning. Uh, so, again, I'm taking the job seriously. Speaking of the appeals, I'm gonna thank Larry and Gary on working on getting the security over there that was requested by many of the folks over there. Uh, I know it took some time to secure things and get it lined up and working with Joe and stuff with the Sheriff's Office, so. Uh, appreciate getting the security company over there for now, people really appreciate it. Uh, last week, I had mentioned something about the hiring practice and if the commissioners looked into a hire that was mentioned last week. Uh, I was pretty much determined now, asked the PHR, did any vetting or looking into previous employment, that I stated no. Just curious how these people get these jobs if nobody looks into them? Is it just another buddy hire? I know he's friends with an elected official, friend of two more highly appointed county officials. Uh, there's discrepancies there that I wish you guys would have looked into and took into consideration, they're pretty serious. Uh, we just, we're people with jobs like this in the county, unfortunately. Uh, from what I believe, this job's been open at least for two years from what I can see from my records. So, I don't know why we couldn't divide that pay up and get the guys that are working there now increased their pay, they're doing a great job. Rather than hire someone that's questionable at the least, that's just another buddy. I mean, it's, it's a shame that's the way the county goes, but hopefully he's looking into it and gets resolved and that's on the board report in the next couple of weeks. Uh, speaking of the reassessment, that, I mean, you guys spoke it, it's going pretty well, everybody's a lot more calm or leaving than they, when they come. Or some are terrified, uh, they walk out saying it was pretty simple and smooth. The only thing I have to say is, I've asked questions here, Larry and Gary, and I've included you in emails this week.
Yeah, some fireplace one.
Correct.
Responding to that one.
Yeah, uh, the one from July twenty first, I sent Mr. Barr with five questions, not only for myself but other board members, uh, that we consider crucial questions as far as determining values. Went unanswered, followed up September eleventh with additional questions, no response, followed up on the seventeenth, got a response on the fireplace. And then was told that someone else with the company of Vision can now answer those questions. So, for.
Did you go to whom that person?
I'm going today.
Okay.
For a month and a half.
Yeah, you said ask that person.
We have thirty board members that could have been asking these questions.
Should have asked, you know, I agree.
And now we have all these appeals that are going through that, we need these questions answered, so just wanted to out there that Mr. Barr is MIA since the first week and hasn't been over there. And quite a few of the board members have questions and I'll be asking them later today. But I did try and emails and I included you guys in that one email and the whole thread and.
I did talk to him yesterday about, uh, two of your emails, fireplace one and the previous one.
Okay.
There's other issues that we're talking about too, that are other questions that are coming up.
Okay.
So, follow up again today and I will find out what he's gonna do here. I know he is, not many excuses for him, I know he had, he hurt his back. Pretty, pretty, pretty bad. So, I know he's been at, I know he's been working on stuff and Chris, he's been on the phone and emailing him, but he hasn't been, School County, she said about, uh, we, or so.
That was from carrying that briefcase with the seven million dollars on School County.
It, listen, it gets transferred electronically, so, so I don't know. You know, but as, as a security, you know, we, we took it seriously from the beginning, we just haven't worked.
I appreciate it.
We're working with the Sheriff's Office to hopefully, what Joe, in February, about what, uh, two weeks till the courts are done, maybe you might be able to freeze somebody up. And we're, we're gonna see if they can work, the Sheriff's Office and the private firm can work together to alleviate some of the costs that we pay the private firm. So, but he has to wait till the court, the jury stuff's all done with the courts, they're tied up with that for the next two weeks, right Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay, any other public comment? No, love the meeting. Uh, grant writer.
Good morning, Commissioners, Carol, plus we have grant writers. Uh, approval to award a contract in the amount of one hundred thousand seventy dollars to run a sea boat paving for a C D B G street rehab project in Tamakiwa. Fifty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-two cents will come from C D B G funding. And forty-six thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents will be funded by the borough of Tamakiwa. The next one I am requesting immediate approval on, it is approve a revision to the twenty twenty-two C D B G program moving seven thousand dollars with the Wayne. From the Wayne Township Summit Station ADA Park Line item to the Housing Rehab Line item. Uh, the reason I am requesting immediate approval is we currently have a twenty twenty-one project which needs additional funding. And in order for us to get this project completed in time to use the twenty twenty-one funds, we need your approval so we can submit to D C A D for their approval.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move the Wayne Township Summit Station money to the Housing Rehab Line.
Circle. Uh, flagging.
Mr. Pedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other words? The phone one? Lord, Lord.
Commissioner, two, okay, mail, public works, um, prior today.
That's, I picked the microphone. It's, uh. There, you all ready?
That's better.
Yeah.
Prior to today's work session, Binswell, uh, opened and read at nine AM for the snow and ice removal of various county buildings. The lowest and most responsive bidder is to be awarded the contract at the September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, or twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five commissioners meeting.
Yeah, that might have blown up.
Morning, brother.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioner.
What in the mouth?
I think it is. It was on, it was on, yeah.
Yeah, maybe out of batteries.
There's a red button on it, I can look at it.
Sure.
I'll look at it.
He's pretty back there.
I'll speak up.
Okay, yeah.
Want to do that or? This is bad.
Batteries did.
That is. Okay, I think you'll be fine, I have to.
Okay.
Okay, well.
Alright, good morning Commissioners, on behalf of Children Youth, Carl Rumble. We have nine items today, first requesting approval of an addendum to the current agreement with Corporate Security Investigations, Monica, Pennsylvania. That agreement is dated August the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. This addendum would add interpreter services at the rate of fifty-five dollars per hour. Uh, we're looking for a new agreement with Speak Right LLC, Galveston, Texas, for their transcription services with a fee of one and a half cents per word. And this would have a term of September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. We're requesting approval of an agreement with Giles Incorporated, thus doing business as Service Master Assured Cleaning out of Reading, Pennsylvania, for cleaning services at specified apartments. The fees were calculated based on square footage and, uh, met the matters such as the layout of what's included in those particular apartments. Uh, we have included two different per unit rates, eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and six cents for general cleaning between occupants. Uh, the fee of one thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-two cents per unit would also include cleaning walls and ceilings, and that may be more or less on a once a year basis. These exceptional cleaning needs would be billed at sixty-five dollars per hour. This agreement is introducing a contract cap of twelve thousand nine hundred dollars and it would have the term of September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. We're requesting approval of an agreement with Justin Reed, doing business at Scoop News, uh, out of Ashland, for foster parent recruitment advertising services with a cap annual amount of nine hundred dollars even. And this would also have the term, this would have the term of September first, twenty twenty-five, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Uh, on to substitute, substitute care agreements. We have an agreement with the Institute for Human Resources and Services out of Kingston, Pennsylvania. They offer foster care services with per diem rates as follows. Traditional foster care is at seventy dollars per diem, medically needy at eighty dollars, respite at seventy dollars. And this would have a term of July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Requesting approval over an agreement with Clear Vision Residential Treatment Services of Montgomery, Pennsylvania, for residential, uh, treatment services of per diem rate of two hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. This would have a term July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Agreement with Concern out of Fleetwood, Pennsylvania, for foster care services with per diem rates as follows. Traditional is at eighty-seven dollars and sixteen cents, intensive is at one hundred eighty-eight dollars and twelve cents, mother baby program is at two hundred nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Concern also offers community-based residential services and the per diem rate is three hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. And finally, they offer in-home community-based, uh, functional family therapy services with a forty-seven dollars and twelve cents, uh, fifteen minute unit rate. Uh, the, uh, intensive behavioral health services written order assessment is at thirty-seven dollars and eleven cents per thirty minute unit. And this agreement would have an overall term, July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Uh, agreement with Children's Choice Incorporated of Delmar, New Jersey, now for foster care with per diem rates as follows. Level one is at seventy-four dollars and twenty-nine cents, level two is at seventy-eight dollars and forty-four cents, level three is at eighty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. Medical level one is at seventy-three dollars and six cents. Their intensive foster care services for children age range, uh, zero to twelve, it's at one hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-three cents. Uh, similar program for children age thirteen and up is one hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. And the term for that agreement would be July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Finally, we have an agreement, DiCon Child Family, uh, Children, Family and Community Services of Pottin, Pennsylvania. They offer foster care services with per diem rates as follows. Traditional level one is at sixty-five dollars and eighty cents, specialized level two is at eighty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents, treatment level care is at ninety-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Medically fragile is at eighty-two dollars and seven cents, and this also would have a term July first, twenty twenty-five, June, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
What's in there? Three on the. Morning, Senator.
Terry.
Albert Grekasky, representing the Election Bureau, are here to ask for several approvals regarding the preparations for the upcoming election on November fourth. Rising for approval to hire twelve election rovers to start immediately and hire two additional rovers for the purpose of office preparation and logistics accuracy testing for the November fourth to twenty, twenty twenty-five municipal election at the rate of twelve dollars per hour. Rovers are to be paid the mileage at the rate of seventy cents per mile traveled on election day to assign polling sites for where needed. The following are as asked. Michael Longis Gonnage, James Zerby, Harold Cooney Sizdek, Paula Warren Castle, Jim Gustus, John Gears, Tim Wood, Gary Kiefer, Cindy Drazenovich, Daniel Walker, Julie Zangary, and William Schwartz. We also ask for the approval to hire following two subcontractors as needed, Harold Cooney Sizdek and Paula Warren Castle. We ask for approval to hire eleven drivers to deliver election day supplies and equipment in preparation of the November fourth, twenty twenty-five municipal election. There are Mr. John Hayes at three hundred sixty dollars, William Cleaner at three hundred ten, James Zerby at three hundred fifty dollars, Rory Riley at three hundred sixty, Jay Tobias at three hundred twenty, Denise Wallace at three hundred twenty, Don Martin Phillips at three hundred sixty, Darren Phillips at three hundred ten, Yari Kiefer at three hundred forty, Vivian Rupert at three hundred, and Keith Pogash at three hundred twenty. We ask for approval to hire nine subcontractors for election day machine delivery drivers in preparation of November fourth. Their deliveries are made actually to the polling sites themselves for the twenty, twenty-five municipal election at a rate of fourteen dollars per hour. There are Mr. Delmar Phillips, Jeff Kovach, Darren Phillips, Keith Pogash, John Gears, Andrew Grekasky, Gary Goodman, Denise Prostic, Dennis Prostic, and John Hayes. Approval we ask for to hire four resolution board members for election day at the S T S building for the municipal election on November fourth, twenty twenty-five. There are Ms. Renee Buchanan at one hundred dollars, Edward Barkett at one hundred dollars, Michael Tagoda at one hundred dollars, and Bob Bydon at one hundred dollars. And finally, approval to hire the following five and up to three additional subcontractors for a total of eight for the computation board at the rate of seventy-five dollars per day beginning November seventh, twenty twenty-five at nine AM in the Election Bureau office to begin the two percent computation and canvassing of returns in municipal election held on Tuesday, November fourth. Currently, we have James Clock, Joanne Dowler, Mary Ann and Julis, Deborah Zach, and Ann and Karcovich.
The prison approval of amendments for the existing contract with Trinity Services Group of Old Mark Garden to modify the menu and adjust the meal prices according to cost per tray will be two dollars and forty-six cents. All terms and conditions of the current contract are remain in full form and in effect for one year. The effective date is November first, two thousand twenty-five. Second item is approved and authorized a contract with Clinton County Correctional Facility in Mach Haven to provide inmate housing at a cost of seventy-three dollars per day for inmates. Terms September first, two thousand twenty-five to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Good morning Commissioners, John Blukely on behalf of Emergency Management. Along with me, I have Dr. Christine Joy from our Safe Schools Coalition. Today, we're asking to approve the Scoop County Safe Schools Coalition bylaws and concept of operation. The coalition was established by the Board of Commissioners back in December two thousand and six to create effective solutions to problems that disrupt the education process and affect school safety. The bylaws and the concept of operation were approved by the Solicitors Office.
I'd like to make a mention that we met with the group and there was a trooper there, Carl, talking about potential drug issues with, and I was very well, had no idea what was going on. And it was a great presentation and good participation by all the schools that led all the chiefs and all this district sense, somebody up there and help put that together, so.
Yes, that's what I, I wanted to say, just thank you for attending that meeting. I know it was an eye-opener. They definitely spoke about drug trends throughout the state of Pennsylvania and most importantly, how it's affecting students in our schools. And our commissioners have pledged to come to our Scoop County Safe Schools Coalition meetings, which basically have our private schools and our public schools, doesn't need people come. We meet and we just work on basically how do we keep our schools safe? Because that's number one priority, as we see in the news lately. I mean, that really is, if our kids can't go to school and feel safe, how can they possibly learn? And if our teachers can't walk into a building and feel safe, how can they possibly do their job? So I just wanted to extend our sincere thank you from our whole entire team. It was a great group to work with, the year-long process. And I will mention their names if that's okay. It was Dr. Steve Toth, Heath Renninger, Kelly Valentine, Kate Urb, John Blukely, and myself. And we worked very hard over a year to try to get all of this put together. And I'm very proud of the work that this team did and I'm very grateful too for jumping on board, so thank you.
It's morning, thanks, started back at two thousand six, but if I had lots of.
Yeah, actually, we were ahead of our, our time, you know, certainly in two thousand and six with what the county had, had established. And, you know, right now, we're, the rest of the city is kind of cashing up, so we're fortunate that we have the big.
Good morning Commissioners, Lindy, I'm the Scoop County Treasurer. I'm presenting the Treasurer's Report ending August twenty twenty-five, ending balance and all accounts, ninety-eight million, two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
Yes, Commissioners, we have five items for informational purposes only. There are budget adjustment for the parking recreation, for the four hundred and two dollars, for the one thousand dollars, the vestituation for a thousand dollars, the donation for one thousand dollars, nine dollars, and a five thousand, eight hundred and five dollars.
General resource. Yes, good morning Commissioners, in the prison, we have two items. They are promotions from part-time COs to full-time COs. The effective date is nine twenty-two, twenty-five, the rate is twenty-five point four three eight oh. And the employees are Kathleen Chirico and Brandon Franklin. I'm hoping to get requests from those two. And in Children in the Youth, we have three appointments as county caseworker ones with a rate of twenty-one point five six nine five. All effective nine twenty-nine, twenty-five. Our rate for all these positions is per the unique contract. And the names of the Children in the Youth caseworkers are Tiffany Lewis, Dalton Mainz, and Kaylee Walton. Conditioner is one information, I have the coroner's office, the appointment of Michelle McKee as a deputy partner investigator, that's effective nine twenty-two, twenty-five. Rate is per the fee schedule. All women spending drug tests in physical are appropriate. All actions involving salary or for positions being created are pending salary approval.
I'd love to have two prison commotions.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Sir.
One question.
Commissioner Pedrora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess.
And it's my fault, I just wondered what the second bid over, wanting for a CBP project. I'll visit the review and I'll have to figure it out later.
That was for the mirror?
It's not moving.
Sorry, I'm waiting for the next sessions.
You're an asshole.
Public comment for Saturday morning? Any resource out for personnel actions?
Nothing reported to me here, any new messages?